Good morning, everyone. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, and the time is 8:38 a.m. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, December 27, and again on Friday, December 31. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, December 27, 2021, and again on Saturday, January 1st, 2022. This virtual hearing is hosted by the Legislature's AV staff and committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. And the host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. The agenda item for today's hearing is Bill Number 229-36 LS introduced by myself, Teresa M. Turahy. It's an act to amend Chapter 6, Title 18, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, as transmitted to Ilhas Laturan Guahan by the Chamor Land Trust Commission, attached hereto as Exhibit 8. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues and thank them for being here, beginning with our minority leader, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Anthony Ada, and Senator Telo Titikwe, and Senator Sabina Paris, my co-chair of the committee. Thank you for being here. All right. Before we hear testimony on the bill, I'm going to begin with an introduction of the bill, and I'm the primary sponsor, so I will introduce the bill myself. Pretty much, I'm just going to recap how we got to this place today. So, on September 29, 2017, the United States of America filed a case against the Chamor Land Trust Commission in the United States of America versus Government of Guam, Chamor Land Trust Commission, and Administrative Director of the Chamor Land Trust, CV 17-00113, District Court of Guam. It's alleging, among other things, violations of the U.S. Fair Housing Act. The Office of the Attorney General and the Governor's Representatives on behalf of the Government of Guam, Attorney Michael Phillips and former Chairperson Pika Farren on behalf of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and Office of the Attorney General on behalf of the Chamor Land Trust Director, and the United States, entered into a settlement conference to attempt to resolve the lawsuit without further litigation. At the conclusion of the settlement conference on November 14, 2019, a settlement term sheet was agreed to in principle by the Council for the Parties and subject to approval by the respective parties. On December 26, 2019, the CLTC adopted Resolution 2019-08, which found the settlement terms in the agreement to be favorable for the Chamor Land Trust program and its beneficiaries, as it preserves the program intact and would not materially affect existing leaseholders. This is Resolution 2019-08. In addition, quote, "The Commission found that the proposed modifications or amendments to the Chamor Land Trust Act and the rules and regulations of the Chamor Land Trust Commission would more clearly demonstrate that the Chamor Land Trust program is a land restoration program meant to rectify the unjust taking of Chamor homelands by the United States federal government between 1898 and 1968, and would expand the program's eligible beneficiaries to include individuals and their descendants who owned land or who ranched, farmed, or otherwise occupied the lands that were taken," unquote. On May 29, 2020, after further settlement negotiations, the settlement agreement between the United States of America and the Government of Guam, Chamor Land Trust Commission, and Administrative Director of the Chamor Land Trust Commission regarding U.S. versus Government of Guam at AL, CV 17-00113, was signed by the Chamor Land Trust Commission and Imaga Hagan Guahan. The settlement agreement resolves the allegations contained in the lawsuit, and in it, the Government of Guam does not admit liability and denies that the Chamor Land Trust Act violates Fair Housing Act. Section C of the settlement agreement outlines the legislative and administrative changes to the Chamor Land Trust Act and the rules and regulations for the Chamor Land Trust Commission. On December 1st, 2020, the 35th Guam Legislature passed Bill 419-35, now Public Law 35-112, to approve the settlement terms in CV 17-00113. Section 4 of Public Law 35-112 states that the Senator Paul J. Bredali Rules and Regulations for the Chamor Land Trust Commission enacted pursuant to 21 GCA Chapter 75 are hereby enacted as rules and regulations applicable to 21 GCA Chapter 75A, except where inconsistent. The Chamor Land Trust Commission shall modify said rules and regulations, as well as any subregulatory rules, policy, practices, or guidance as necessary to be consistent with 21 GCA Chapter 75A as enacted by this act. So, the proposed amendments to the rules contained in this bill before us today, Bill 229, are to comply with the changes in the statute and Public Law 35-112, which were mandated by the settlement agreement in the court case. On June 23 of this year, the Committee on Land held an oversight hearing to discuss specifically the status of the implementation of Public Law 35-112 and swift confirmation of applicant's eligibility to the program. On November 15, 2021, the Chamor Land Trust Commission transmitted a markup of the proposed amendments to the Senator Paul Bredali Rules and Regulations for Chamor Land Trust Commission, Chapter 6, Title 18, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, to Ilhas Laturan Guahan. I want to thank the Commission for their work on these rules and regulations. On Wednesday, November 24, the compiler notified my office that the Senator Paul Bredali Rules and Regulations for the Chamor Land Trust Commission, Public Law 23-38, as the 23rd Guam Legislature, as well as amendments passed in Public Law 24-31, were newly codified as Chapter 6 of Title 18, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. So, the markup of Bill or rules and regulations provided by the Chamor Land Trust Commission will be incorporated into the committee report for this bill, as they've been adapted to reflect the recently codified rules and regulations. Well, the bill has been amended, so our bill now reflects the recent codification of the Paul Bredali Rules and Regulations, and so that's the difference. That's kind of the changes versus the draft that was sent to us from the Chamor Land Trust Commission. So, the stated purpose of these rules and regulations set forth the necessary procedures with respect to lease applications, detailed standards of eligibility, to provide for methods of inspection and review, as well as a system of notice of hearing prior to lease revocation, and generally to provide for certain requirements necessary to meet the goals and objectives of the beneficiary's homelands. So, Bill 229-36 LS was introduced to adopt the amended rules and regulations to assure Chamor Land Trust Commission compliance with Public Law 35-112 and the settlement agreement between the United States of America and the Government of Guam, the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and the Administrative Director of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. Our bill received, the fiscal note on our bill is still pending from BBMR. We've received legal bureau's review and recommendations, and I will summarize those. There were about five of them. The first was that the committee should determine whether these rules and regulations should be adopted as a new chapter in the same manner as 21 GCA Chapter 75A was enacted separately from 21 GCA Chapter 75. Secondly, if the intent of this bill is to pass the rules and regulations pursuant to 5 GCA 9303C, which is the administrative adjudication law, we recommend that the committee revise this bill to incorporate the text of Exhibit 8 into the bill itself, as well as revise so that it is consistent with the standing laws there. Three, depending on what the committee ultimately decides, it should further determine whether all references to 21 GCA Chapter 75 should include corresponding references to 21 GCA Chapter 75P. Four, although the usage of Chamor, which is, they're saying the uses of Chamor spells with capital C, capital H, is probably more accurate, it is not reflected in the settlement agreement, and it is unclear if using such term would constitute a breach of the safe. Based on the foregoing all references in the bill to Chamor homelands, or any variation thereof, should be revised to Chamor land trust property. Those were comments by our legal, and we are committees currently considering those comments. We will, of course, consult with the Attorney General's Office, the counsel, Mr. Phillips from the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and committee members. All right. So, I'd like to begin, if we can, with, since this is, oh, let me first pause and recognize also the presence of Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you again, Senator, for coming. Again, we have with us Senators Chris Duñez, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Telo Titikwe, Senator Sabina Paris, and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you. So, since this bill is to comply with the settlement and, you know, the district court case, I would like to begin by asking the attorneys what recent communications from the United States in regards to settlement are there? Have there been any further discussions after the settlement, after we passed Public Law 35-112? If you could give us an update on that litigation? So, I know we have with us Deputy Attorney General James Cantwell, who represents the Attorney General's Office, who represented the Government of Guam, and the Director of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. We also have with us Attorney Mike Phillips, who represented the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and who was at that time represented by the Chairperson Pika Farren as well. So, if you attorneys could help us out here to give us an update on the litigation. Attorney Cantwell, Deputy AG.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you. To answer your question, we have been in communication with the attorneys at Department of Justice, who have been monitoring our progress in implementing the conditions of the settlement agreement, including the amendment of the Act initially, and the development of these rules and regulations as they've gone along, in working with them at the level of the Commission, up to even informing them of today's public hearing. They have been very hopeful to see that there are the development of the rules and regulations, because they are integral to the settlement agreement, almost as much as the amendment of the Act itself was. So, they are fully informed. They have not given any comments to the bill as it is presently established, because, well, for whatever reason, they haven't had any comment, and that's probably a good thing. And just to answer the question, though, is to say that we've been in communication, and they've been monitoring, and I think we're all hopeful to see that these rules come to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Cantwell. Did they have any input on the draft rules and regulation, the markup rules and regulations that the Commission prepared and sent to the Legislature?
They had no significant comments to earlier versions. Unfortunately, when the announcement for this public hearing came out, and I transmitted to them the latest version, I received auto replied messages that all the Department of Justice attorneys on this case were off for the holidays and would be returning January 3rd, which would be today in the States. I, however, do not anticipate any comments forthcoming from them. Certainly none that would affect the progress of the bill as it is. The comments that they made to earlier versions were just to make sure that, essentially, that it complies with the terms of the agreement and is reconciled with the amended Act itself. I personally do not anticipate any concerns expressed by the DOJ, much less any kind of pushback. I think we're all just hopeful to see this actually get to this point and get passed.
All right. I appreciate that, and if I could get copies of any comments that they've made on those markup versions, just to ensure, I want to have some confidence that what we are doing, yes, they've generally have no objection to. And I know I won't put words in their mouth, but I just would like to see if they've, some kind of evidence that they've received it, and that was their comment, if any. All right. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to that as regards to communication with the United States government on the case? All right.
Nothing, myself, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Okay. And so, would you, did you, attorney, well, I'd like to begin with the Chamor Land Trust Commission, direct, I'm sorry, Chairperson, Mr. John Rages, and if, did you have testimony that you would like to present, or?
Hi. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and all the other senators who are present today. No, I don't have, I don't have formal testimony, just here to support as well with our other commissioners, and just, you know, looking forward to get the last pieces of the settlement enacted, and, you know, as we continue to work through our application lists and managing these leases, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, it's your, do you believe that the bill before you adequately represents necessary changes to the rules required by the settlement?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. And if I could ask Attorney Phillips, attorney for the Chamor Land Trust Commission during this litigation, what are your, if you have any testimony on this bill, or in regards to the sufficiency of these changes to the rules and regulations to comply with the settlement?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I have some comments and maybe a little bit of a contribution. You know, I really, first of all, I want to thank all the senators for attending this hearing. Hi, everybody. It's nice to see all of you, and thank you for this invitation. Just a couple additions, and some of them are historic, and others, maybe one or two just minor suggestions for changes. Number one, Madam Speaker, is that I've heard you give the history, and I always enjoy listening to history, but in particular about this case, and one of the things that everybody should be reminded, I think everybody's heard, but sometimes we forget, is we actually prevailed in the summary judgment stage. If we are not prevailed, the United States would not be all nice and friendly like they are today, and they accept that. They accepted what happened, and I can add that you were there, and you saw the shock on, I'm sure everybody's face, but definitely on the United States, when the judge came out and said, "No, absolutely not, that you can't have main rules a matter of law, that this act, and this was the former act, is unconstitutional on its face." She said, "Absolutely not, that she's not, she cannot do that." And as the litigation continued, it became clear, I think quickly, that the idea of land restoration, which we had suggested, and the judge had expanded, I'm not going to say she adopted what we said, because she actually expanded it and was very articulate. From that point on, in my opinion, there was just no way that Guam was going to lose, because when you look at it like that, that's exactly what we've been doing, and you can, you know, or not you, but others may have made allegations and, quite frankly, misunderstandings, as one of the attorneys told me after the hearing, not knowing that, that's not an excuse, but, you know, the fact is, that's the truth, and I think as attorneys, even on the other side, they're responsible for really understanding what's going on. So, that's one suggestion I would have, is part of the record, the AG's office and the small contribution we made at that time really made a difference, and I'm glad you were there, so you know I'm not exaggerating. It's very favorable to the Act and to Guam. The second thing I would add, and I don't remember it being in the term sheet, but I believe it's the intent, and it would be an awkward situation, Madam Speaker, if somebody came to the Commission and said, "You know, I was working here," and it's probably one of the few businesses on Guam, and it was, you know, use a nice word, confiscated, and that person is told by the Commission, "Well, the word 'worked' is not exactly here in that sense. That was intended, and we had discussed it, and we discussed it early on, and it was minor, and so, for that reason, I don't think it fell into a certain category." And along with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add that the intent here was to expand, it was to be more inclusive, it wasn't to shrink, it wasn't to narrow, it was the complete opposite. And so, without doubt, it expanded the, just the number of individuals that qualify greatly, and back then, we went through the list of all those that now would qualify that didn't before, and I won't, I don't think it's necessary that I repeat it, and I may not even remember everybody, but there are a number of categories that were not allowed before that legitimately were no different than those that qualified. And so, now I believe it's expanded to a point where, depending on who's interpreting it, it can either be inclusive or very exclusive. If you don't find your name on a word, it's like, "Sorry, it's not there." That was never the intent, and I'm sure you know, like I do, I've heard people come to me thinking that I have some kind of authority, I can make suggestions or changes, and obviously I can't, but I know for a fact that the intent was not to put it on the onus of the beneficiary to track that he or she own land, or he or she's grandfather worked here or there, that was never the intent. And so, that is something that you might want to look at in the rules to help the Commission, because if, as time goes by, and chairmans change, and members change, and staff change, they're left with a document that they feel, "Hey, you know, they watched the court proceedings, you better not screw it, we better only do this." That was never the intent at all. I know for a fact, right now, we have people that go to Mark, they go to the libraries, they actually go on Sumai, trying to find a way to show the Commission that they qualify, and I tell them, "That's not the intent." In fact, it's the opposite. The moment you are able to show or share that your dad or your mom or your grandfather came from Sumai, you're automatically qualified, automatically, because they took all of Sumai. That's the way it's supposed to be. Now, if someone says, or what I should say, Speaker, is that it's unfair for me to say, for example, the Chair of the Commission are not doing the job, they've got to be spooked. They've got all these acres of land, and they're like, "I just can't handle it there because of the fact that somebody says that." I know that, because I was in the case. Anybody who followed the case should know it too, but the new members of the Commission and the staff and all that, they, I think, if you don't make it clear in the rules and regulations, we, in essence, don't give them the license to do what everybody assumed and interpreted was going to be done. It's really intended that way. It's not intended to have everybody take a history lesson, or do the whole genealogy thing, or anything like that. There will be some cases like that, where people over time are still unaware of a situation, but, you know, when you say, "Munyanguna," you say this or that, we already know, and that's a similar situation here. There are many areas on Guam that the Commission by now should know, and I'm not going to go through them, I'll use Sumai as the example, but once you say Sumai, it's over. You just welcome them in, and you move to the next step. That's one suggestion, that's kind of combined with the interpretation being for the record, if you worked. So, worked on, worked, it really was not intended to not include people that, for example, were working at a store for the requisite amount of time, and then that ended because the United States took that property. That's really the same, so whether they were living there, or that definition, the ranch, the farm, and all that, I believe that it includes that, so I just want to make sure that's part of the record. Secondly, or third, Madam Speaker, is I don't believe that changing the spelling is in any way can be interpreted as a breach. I mean, they can change their name, you know, they tell us one day, "Don't, no longer call us United States of America, call us this." It's insignificant. You know, I have no reason to believe anybody's being disingenuous, when there's no trick here. If that's the spelling, yeah, that's harmless. I don't think that's any serious consequence. In fact, at that time, I think our Chamor spelling was already CH. It wasn't the C-H-A-M-O-R-U, but I believe it was already CH. I don't remember that being any consequence. I know what was important to them, and that was in it. And, yeah, last but not least, and I'll just mention, I know it's not part of the rules, but along with the expectation, Madam Speaker, a time limit, you know, you mentioned earlier, or somebody did, I think, maybe I was just listening to the radio beforehand, and somebody mentioned the fact that rules and regs were with the Legislature, and there's kind of a law that says if there's no action, then they go into force. Well, that's good for the Legislature, I think people have accepted that. It may have a downside, but overall is positive. The same thing really has to happen with the Chamor Land Trust, because, you know, they had that burst of activity, and we didn't see any before, maybe since 95, and I haven't seen any after, and so, the first thing they're going to say, rightfully so, is, "Yeah, where's the money?" And so, between money and a time limit, there has to be a happy balance, because I know they're going to say, "But we don't have the money." But at the same time, we just can't keep going and meeting like this every year, and the land is not being distributed. So, there really needs to be a time limit, that there's that expectation. You know, Madam Speaker, as an attorney, they do that in court now. They give the trial judges an actual time limit to resolve cases, and you're always able to work through in case you don't, but guidelines like that, I think, will help the Commission, because the Act has been here since 75, and the participants have changed, you know, all the way through, and even the so-called new Commission with the Chairperson Taidinko, and then Marcinus, et cetera, et cetera. They're always going to change, but the Act really, really doesn't, and that's what I'm hoping we can pass on to the current Commission and their staff, is a set of guidelines that empowers rather than restricts them and expands the eligibility as was intended, rather than appearing to restrict. And while the language doesn't appear to restrict, Madam Chair, when members of the Commission or the staff believe that you have to go and prove your heritage, that's not it at all. That's where the bank, if anywhere now, the Commission should really be the place where, because it's most relevant, where if you want to know your ancestry, go there. There's no reason that they shouldn't have that information. It shouldn't be left to an applicant that apparently, many believe it's left to them, they have letters, they have directions, and that's inconsistent with the settlement. That's another way of depriving people of really their entitlement, and while it's not, you know, directly on point with what's being considered today, I would just say that I think the changes are in line with the law from what I've seen. The one area that I probably overlooked, but I couldn't find, is the one area that expanded the ability to have the land maintained after the decedent, who is the eligible beneficiary, passes away, and there's some restrictions regarding the marriage and things like that. I guess I missed that part, but, and so, I just wanted to mention that, because I don't want to, I didn't see it, so I don't want to represent that I'm okay with it when I haven't seen it, but if you let me know where it is, or the staff let me know, I'll look at it. I doubt there's any problem, because we went over this with the law, and it was fine. And I think, I think that's all I've seen, Madam Speaker, based on what I've heard, I just wanted to add a couple of those points. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Phillips. I'd like to recognize, before we go any further, the presence of Senator Talina Nelson. So, we have with us Senators Chris Duñez, Tony Ada, Senator Telo Titikwe, Senator Sabina Paris, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Talina Nelson. We also have with us the Chairperson of the Commission, Mr. John Rages, who testified, and we also have other commissioners. I saw Angela Sontis, another commissioner, thank you for being here, and we have the former Chairperson Pika Farren, thank you for being here as well. So, Commissioner Sontis, would you like to add testimony on behalf of the Commission? All right.
I'm good, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the other parties to the settlement, as we discussed, were the Attorney General's Office on behalf of the Government of Guam, and the Director of the Trust, and we have the Director of the Trust here today. The acting director is Angela Camacho. So, Ms. Camacho, did you have testimony that you wanted to provide today?
Speaker, I'd just like to thank you for your support in helping us with this bill so that we can meet this requirement by the settlement agreement. Pretty much, that's it.
All right. Thank you, and I know you have staff with us, Joey Longuero, Joey Cruz, I'm sorry, Joey Cruz, Program Coordinator, Chamor Land Trust Commission, instrumental in everything that we do, right, Joey? Anyways, thank you for being here as well. Thank you both of you for your work on this. So, I think Attorney Toft, who represents the Commission currently in its regular work, is also here today. Thank you, Attorney Toft, from the Attorney General's Office for also being here and your work on these rules. So, again, if I can just clarify, do Attorney Cantwell, or do you feel that the proposed rules adequately address the, well, you said that they've adequately addressed the settlement agreement. well, you said that they've adequately addressed the settlement agreement. Do you think they reflect adequately on the provisions regarding transfer to after um unless he dies?
Um, if I can chime in, Nicholas Toft, CLTC here. To address Attorney Phillips' concerns, a lot of that was contained in the bill uh, or sorry, yeah, Bill Number Four nineteen thirty five uh that enacted the chapter seventy five A of the Title Twenty One Guam Code annotated. So those were not included in the in this current set of proposed changes to the to the rules and regulations, because they were already covered.
Okay, so um all right, and without those um being echoed or mirrored in the rules, you think that's sufficient? That's enough?
I do, yes.
All right. Uh, Attorney Kanto, you agree with that?
I do concur, Madam Speaker.
All right. Ms. Attorney Phillips, would you say that that was adequate, then? The transfer requirements and who's eligible for transfer of these properties when unless he dies is very clearly spelled out in the existing law. And I guess that would govern, uh, Mr. Phillips?
Just based on my experience, uh, Madam Speaker, no. Every time I've worked with agencies, if it's their operation, so you know, you 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 have your enabling legislation, and then you have your personnel rules, right? And so generally, the personnel rules are are thick, right? Um, I mean, uh, half of you there have managed, or maybe more, managed departments, and everybody's familiar with what I'm saying, so. But I'm not, I'm not giving a legal opinion on that, I'm really just giving um uh based on my experience, uh, you you cover everything. And oftentimes, um the interpretations of the rules, right, we're all kind of familiar with the with the Chevron issue, where departments and agencies are entitled to interpret uh or give definitions, for example, to words if that department or agency has a particular expertise in that area. And so in this case, uh, I think people are, for example, um, if you don't mention that and you leave it to the applicant to have to find it in the law, that that really puts both um the staff in an awkward position and and the applicant. So I would always think of it as a or or suggest respectfully that we think of it as a, you know, a a flow chart for an applicant. How do how do they find this or that? Most provisions of law, when you hand it to an agency, they develop their operating procedures, their rules and regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So I would suggest that to the extent that the commission and the legislature can, that that you go ahead and, especially when it's consistent, you go ahead and 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 repeat it and 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 give the staff at the commission, you know, uh uh permission in essence and and guidance, because otherwise, both they and the applicants are going to go back to the law. Yeah, so, but I I I don't think it's absolutely necessary, but I think from a practical standpoint, it would be uh it would be more complete.
All right, thank you. Can can you um can the attorneys here please testify as to whether you think this needs to be a a separate chapter, separate from the original rules and regulations? Or, uh, you know, the as the same as we enacted a chapter, a separate chapter seventy five A to deal with new leases going forward and not to impact those prior leases? Do you feel that these rules should do the same? Should these rules only impact those new rules pursuant to chapter seventy five? I mean, those new leases pursuant to chapter seventy five A? Or should these uh Paul Bordalio rules and regulations be amended to impact even the prior leases? Attorney Kanto, if I could get you with you?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I I don't know that the placement in a a particular chapter or categorization will affect the legal effect of the language uh in terms of your question, however, about whether it should affect leases prior to the effective date of the settlement agreement. That's something I would have to think about, uh, just because there are circumstances that arise regarding whether lease applications that were submitted prior to the change in the law are approved by the commission after the effective date of the agreement. And I think it's important to note that it's the act of approving a lease application that actually invokes the the settlement agreement. So that may actually be fruitful to do, to have it applied to prior leases in terms of the effect of the rules and regulations. That's something I want to look into and communicate to to your office in the very near future about. Once I have a concrete result, if that's all right.
Okay, good. I would appreciate an input from everyone regarding that. We did send that concern to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission Acting Director, so that we could uh we would, that seems a technical issue that I really want resolved. The the bill that was passed, or the current public laws, enacted a new chapter so that it would not affect existing leases, and it was only to affect new leases going forward. And we, and that was set to be consistent with the settlement. So we want to know the effect of these rules as well. Or how how these should uh who these should affect? All right. Would anyone like to comment on that before we move to the next issue?
Madam Speaker, I would.
Yes, sure, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, um, you know, the the way it was handled in the law, I think, is is similar here with regard to the fact that we're very clear, it does not apply the 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 requirements going forward, do not apply retroactively. At the same time, the legislature is always free, as the commission is, to adopt rules for its general operation. So someone comes along and says, well, you didn't have to do that, well, we did it anyway. I think the legislature, um, and you know, you can have the input of of all the parties there, uh, needs to make clear for the record uh whether you're doing that, because you made it, I I think it very clear, and you made it very clear and did a good job of ensuring that with regard to the law, that for those that are already uh taking care of, so to speak, it it does not apply. And if the legislature intends to do the same here, um, there might be some provisions that that you have in here that are not necessarily required by the um uh the settlement. Uh, I I haven't seen any, but for the most part, this is a settlement agreement kind of action. And so if you're going to limit to that, limit it to that, I would state it and and make it clear, because again, we're not talking about the Chairman Rages or anybody like, we're talking about the next year and the next year and 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 the next staff member. And we want to give them guidance, so nobody says, you know, I don't know what to do, sorry, I can't do anything. And that's a very scary position to be in as government employee. Obviously, they need the authority to act, so I would suggest you you just make that clear, Madam Speaker. Uh, but I would suggest that, uh, yeah, there there's no need to do anything more than what was done in the law with regard to the rules and regulations as required. But the legislature, of course, is free to to change rules as is the commission, right? And so as long as we just make it clear that this is not done as a requirement of the settlement, this is just what we've decided, then then I don't think there there can be any opposition to that.
Attorney Toft, did you want to give separate testimony on on the bill? Or anyone else on behalf of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission? That they want to offer testimony?
No, I I I think I'll do the same thing as Attorney Kanto did and and uh make my comments in a in an email later, after I do research on that same issue.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, and so on the bill, we do also have the the former chairperson, Pika Farin, to testify. Ms. Farin, please proceed.
Good morning, everybody. Um, thank you, Speaker, for um extending the invitation to join this public hearing. It is really nice to be on here and see all of you, especially um all members in the uh in the commission that are there now, um, the new acting director, um, all you beautiful senators. Um, thank you, guys, for having me. Um, you know, this bill is the necessary step to get these Paul Bordalio rules in line with the settlement agreement. It it basically just changes in the language. Straightforward. But then it also more clearly defines the purpose of the Tomorrowland Trust, which is to to return land to those whose land was taken, regardless of race, color, or national origin. So then it also expands eligibility. Back in, I think it was two thousand nineteen, when um I was still on the commission, and I was working with Attorney Phillips, um, Attorney Toft, Attorney Kanto, and we were sitting sitting in there, working out these details. You know, I I I still strongly believe that the settlement was a win for the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. It was a win for our people. Um, and I'm I'm really happy to see that the new commission has worked really hard to ensure that we, that the Tomorrowland Trust is following the settlement agreement, so that, you know, we can finally, one day, put the lawsuit behind us and move forward and really work hard and focus on getting land to the families that that uh really need the land. Effect of these changes on existing leases, if I can just um comment on that, I echo Attorney Phillips' um statement. You know, um, in the settlement agreement, it was very clear that the changes were not to be retroactive. They were to uh only for new leases moving forward. So perhaps it would be more clearly defined in the laws, I'm not sure. Um, I definitely defer to um the Attorney Generals to give that guidance, but that that's my understanding, it's supposed to be retroactive. Active, it's supposed to be moving forward, sorry. Um, so yeah, I fully support this bill with um with that consideration kind of relooked at. Um, thank you. Thank you, Speaker Turlahe. I I appreciate all the work you've done and continue to do for the Tomorrowland Trust.
Thank you very much. I I also am grateful for your work. I think we're here today because of your your participation in those settlement agreements and the recognition of this as a restoration program is a huge win for Guam. Sido Smasi. Of course, thank you to the commission for your continued work. I'm going to open it up from the other senators now, but before I do, if I could just get an update, maybe from the commission itself as to how are you treating applicants now? Or we have a waiting list since nineteen ninety five, and we had an oversight hearing to see how we were determining eligibility, because we had received many calls at that time with people being told that they were no longer eligible, or they had to prove that they were eligible. And so we tried to ensure that there were some tools available to the commission itself, so that they would be able to make that determination quickly. We just, we discussed Sumai, in particular, at the time, as being one of those areas that very obvious, if someone mentions they were from Sumai, their family, you know, were from Sumai, that that uh we would hope that the commissioners had a general knowledge of that and would be able to act swiftly on those things, and there are no questions. But I just, if we could just get an update as how as how new uh how we are moving forward on our existing waiting lists since nineteen ninety five, how we're moving forward, new leases under the new statute, and uh in particular, the eligibility. How are we, you know, are we are we insisting that applicants go and verify their own eligibility, or are we taking it from at the commission level and and able to do that based on the knowledge we have of Guam's history? Maybe I'll ask the director or the chairperson, Chair, Mr. Rages?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to pass it over to Angie and or Joey, uh, since they have been uh really working with the our land agents uh to ensure that, um, you know, some of the leg, the legwork is done by the by the land agents in the commission. So I'll I'll pass it over to Angie, she's she's been uh the integral part as well with Joey to make sure that that is the case, so.
All right, thank you, Chairman Rages, Director Camacho.
Sure. Thank you, Speaker. So since our oversight hearing, um, we coordinated a training between Guam and ancestral lands commission and um a couple of our staff, so that um they have um they're more knowledgeable on the research. We do ask um applicants if they could just assist us with providing names of their parents, their grandparents, and um, we basically do as much as we can to find the the connection between uh the person whose land was taken or farmed. As much as possible, we really try to show it through documentation, but there is that attestation where they could just say that this is where their family lived, and this is who lived there. Um, but but it's kind of a good exercise as well. Uh, and it's creating conversations within families, um, I noticed, where there's this discussion about uh, you know, who who's who their great grandparents are and things like that. And we're not trying to make it difficult, um, but we are making sure that of when the Attorney General's Office calls our office, we're able to provide some type of documentation to show that we are following the settlement settlement agreement. Um, and then I will also ask Joey to um add to uh this discussion, if you don't mind.
Mr. Cruz.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Senators. In addition to what Ms. Camacho had mentioned, we were also working with the Mark Library to try to obtain um information they have regarding like uh from the census and all that other great stuff, to try to create a database internally. And also to incorporate information from the Guam ancestral lands commission. Just recently, the board had passed our strategic plan. Within our strategic plan, we're creating standard operating procedures uh that would also address or cover some of the concerns mentioned by Attorney Phillips, where we have a standard process, where whether the board changes or employees changes, uh, the process won't change.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I appreciate your work and and consistency we're we're trying to go for here. I'm hoping that none of that results in the delay. I agree with Director Camacho that the affidavits, according to the law, were supposed to be sufficient and the guiding document, but all right, I'm going to open that now for questions or comments by senators. Call them in the order that they appeared. It was Senator Duñez.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker, hafa de to everyone, and what a great way to start our new year. Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, Speaker, I just want to start by recognizing your leadership on this issue and I'm in full support of Bill Two Twenty Nine as it moves through the process. I'd like to thank everyone, you know, for this, uh, what I consider a watershed moment and and a landmark case, really, for Guam on this settlement agreement going forward. And all the work that was put into it. I know that this sets out the rules and regulations, so that we have uh, you know, the the operational, uh, you know, structure going forward. As for the settlement agreement, and you know, as as Joey mentioned, and the director mentioned, and the the chairpersons have mentioned, that um, you know, the operations are are going to be something we're going to continue to work with you on going forward. Uh, Attorney Phillips put it right. I mean, we got to get moving, and we got to start issuing land and and having the resources to to develop the properties properly. But today is about the rules and regulations and about the settlement agreement, and I I guess my only comment would be uh uh listening to Attorney Kanto to basically incorporate whatever, or at least review whatever possible uh responses will come from, um, you know, the the federal side in terms of the agreement. But I think Attorney Kanto put it well so far, so far so good in terms of no news is good news, and hopefully that continues. But as we move forward, Madam Speaker, you know, that would be my only uh review, of course, to make sure that we continue uh to operate in the spirit and in in what was laid out for the agreement. But I think we're well on track going forward with that. Um, Pika, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize you, you know. Uh, I know you do your Pika's best, and you have your interpretation of what your best accomplishments uh are or were or going to be in life. But I contend, I contend that this is one of your best accomplishments, if not the best. So I thank you for your efforts and your work. So, um, Madam Speaker, I just want to continue to watch the development uh as we go forward and and finally hear this on the floor. Uh, but to date, it sounds like um uh everything is 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 in place and moving forward. And I want to just congratulate everyone on that. I I guess I did have one question for maybe Attorney Toft. In your review of the meetings and the continuing evolution of the process, um, you know, do you feel as though the current statute and operations of CLTC are are moving forward? And of course, this will be maybe the final culmination of the complement on uh on on the process of of the operations of CLTC, reviewing cases and and administering distribution?
I feel like this is a necessary step as far as getting getting CLTC's kind of feet under it, moving forward to the future. getting, getting CLTC's kind of feet under it moving forward to the future. I do feel like there are potentially other changes to the rules that CLTC could use to, to really kind of speed things along. And we are in the process of moving on that as well. If you've watched any of our meetings, we are discussing certain other changes to the rules that don't have anything to do with the, the, the federal suit, but that we think would improve the efficiency of, of what's going on with CLTC and, and really allow us to, to take bigger strides ahead. But I think we should keep that, those things separate from, from this just for clarity sake moving forward and, and also just to, to get this part of it done and behind us at this time.
I, I agree and I, and I thank you for that because I think the speaker has, has basically put it forward eloquently as well that, you know, the daily operations in the business, you know, need, need to continue. But you're right, I think that for all of us, there's gonna be a certain comfort level. You know, to, to knowing that we're operating under the structure of the settlement agreement and that, and you're right in terms of, Joey, I want to thank you for, and Angela, you know, and Angie, you know, the last oversight hearing, that's a good update today. That you've, that you've operated under what we've asked you to do in the last oversight to, to make sure that you're, you know, you're fleshing out really all of the operational issues going forward so that we can, you know, basically get into a flow of where we really are clear on, on, on these rules, regulations and issuances so that we can carry it out and really, you know, finally realize the true intent. So I want to just thank everybody for their work and Madam Speaker, maybe at the, at the conclusion of this issue, you know, this, this bill passage, I want it finally does then we'll, I'm sure you will do this, but I'd like to regroup once again with CLTC and, and kind of maybe do a, maybe do a hearing at, at their place and basically kind of get, get a feel for the operational functioning and everything else now that we can be assured that we're, we're really la la mona as they say. We're moving forward, so that's all the comments that I have for now, like I said. Please Deputy Attorney General, I'm sure you will, Cantor, just keep us abreast of any updates so that we can get that information quickly and, and move on anything we may need to address. But hopefully, you know, we've pretty much got it covered. And, and of course on the floor, we'll, we'll see what the final iteration will be. But this is Massey Madam Speaker for the opportunity to just make a few comments on this. And once again, thank you Pika and, and thank you John, Mr. Rages for your continued work going forward. You've always been responsive to us and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much Senator Duñez, Minority Leader, also now recognized Senator Tony Adet.
Thank you Madam Chair and to everyone on, on the Zoom meeting here. Thank you to the commission and to the attorneys for all the hard work that's placed into this, to the rules here. You know, on, I tend to agree with Attorney Mike Phillips on the linear transfer provision on, you know, whether we incorporated into the rules and probably perhaps other things that I might have missed going through it where, you know, and maybe if Attorney Toff or the chairman can answer the questions that I may have here is, how do we address the current waiting list and the existing leases for those now who do not qualify under the new law?
Madam Speaker, I can answer that if you'd like.
Attorney Cantor, please.
And this has come up in discussion just a few minutes ago, but there is, just to be clear, no retroactive effect in terms of the way the law's been amended as it would potentially impact leases that were approved and issued before the date of the settlement agreement, June 4th, 2020. So Senator Addit, to answer your question, for those existing leases, there is no effect, they are unchanged.
Okay, and how about the current waiting lists for those individuals that are on the current waiting list that do not qualify under the new law? What happens to them?
Well, the way that the law has restructured the program to be more true to its nature as a land restoration program, if they are not, if applicants who are in line, because like I said, the demarcation for purposes of the settlement agreement is when a lease is approved for issuance by the commission. So those applicants who have applied are in a waiting line but have not had a lease approved and issued to them, they would have to fall under the new requirements. Which hopefully, as has been said, can be, can be accomplished by virtue of the oral history of their family being able to attest if necessary because of a lack of documentary evidence. One thing that was acknowledged and the DOJ had to be educated about is the fact that there are no significant paper trials necessarily for all families who were displaced. And therefore, that's why the self-baptist station aspect is there. And hopefully that oral history exists within their family to be able to say, yes, we came from this area or I'm a descendant of someone who actually occupied a ranch that land. So hopefully those will be, they will be qualified in that respect. For those who don't have that history, then, then no, they would not be eligible, even if they're in waiting line now because they do not have a lease that's already approved for the date of the settlement agreement.
Okay, I see, thank you. Yeah, and you know, like I said, you know, I'd like to thank all those that worked hard on this and hopefully we'll be able to get this through and, and get these provisions passed and continue on with issuing out leases and to, to our people. Thank you Madam Chair for giving me the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Sidoz Massey Senator Adet, Senator Titigui.
Sidoz Massey Madam Chair, I mean Madam, well Speaker Chair. And thank you everyone for being here today. You know, because it's always a pleasure to see you here and the work that you've done is continuing on. And I'd like to thank also Angie Kamacho for, for seeing through to that, especially the resolution, which I have a question regarding the resolution that was signed on December 26th, 2019 by Pika, then the chairwoman and the director signed on it with regards to number three, it mentions that the Tomorrowland Trust Resolution mandates training for the Tomorrowland Trust leadership and staff. So what type of training has been conducted to date and has there been any requirements to meet the continuing training? So Angie, can you answer that please?
Sure, thank you Senator. So as part of the requirement of the settlement, all of our staff has completed the fair house meeting. So that, that is the start. So we will continue as we hire additional staff, that would be a requirement as well.
Okay, and also, you know, I think there's something also mandating the ethics classes with, with you guys and I hope it, it follows through, it's very important, you know, we don't want to see what happened, you know, several years ago, you know, with people jumping the line and there was issues of certain circumstances where people were in leadership positions, had family members, you know, going to the front of the line. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen, you know, and I think that, you know, some of the stuff in this resolution is gonna be very helpful moving forward. And again, I thank you Pika for having that insight and, and those who were sitting on the board at the time. And I'd like to thank you too, Mr. Rages for, you know, your leadership as well as the chairman in seeing this through. This is the, this second piece of the puzzle, you know. Guam Code annotated was solidified and now going through the gar. Though I think there might be some, a couple of changes maybe to this legislation and to incorporate some of the concerns, so I look forward to that Madam Chair and keeping abreast to what's going on. Any kind of emails being sent from the Attorney General's Office, I greatly appreciate it. I know that Attorney Taff is providing a testimony later on, I'd like to review that as well. But to the current Tomorrowland Trust Board Members, Sidoz Massey, thank you so much. And of course Joey, I, I wouldn't be remiss, I have to say thank you very much for all your hard work. I know it's very difficult, you know, what, what you're doing as well. I know Angie, your short staffed and hopefully we can look into that and provide some support to the Tomorrowland Trust. But thank you everyone for, it's a win-win according to Pika, feels, feels like it was a win-win according to Attorney Cantor. Good to see you as always. That this was a win for Guam. So let's make sure that win is not in any way damaged at all and moving forward. So Sidoz Massey, Angela, adonkulu sidoz massey, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you Senator Titigui. As to this, the funding for staff, I just want to note here, if I could take this opportunity, that we did try to squeeze in a little bit more money thanks to the Appropriations Chair and the work of the commission for additional positions this year. I told him, give them the money this year, they will make it, they will show us what they can do with this money and we will get results. And then so I put my neck on the line, they're promising that we are gonna get some results as far as lease applications planning as to which subdivisions are going to be made. And we are very much hoping though that ARP funding is going to be used for infrastructure for the Tomorrowland Trust. You know, we've, we passed a submerged lease bill that would give some additional revenues for infrastructure. But we need massive amounts of infrastructure to be brought to these properties and the surrounding properties to increase housing and businesses in the area. So I'm hoping still to see some ARP funding allocated for those purposes as well. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Sidoz Massey Madam Speaker and for seeing this through and the line of questioning, I really appreciate and the dialogue that has transpired thus far. You know, Pika, I do remember in the last term, you know, meeting with me and this is one of, potentially one of the stumbling blocks in order to get the lands, you know, dispersed to our, our people. So, you know, thank you too for all your persistence and all this and thank you to everyone here that has played a role to get to this point. So yeah, I, I see that this, this bill is an important bill in, in regards to complying with the settlement agreement. And I, you know, if any way we can improve it, you know, I think I appreciate some of the recommendations by Attorney Phillips. And maybe I can ask this question, the question was asked if this was sufficient. And, but I think maybe perhaps in the SOPs, I think this is where it would require, you know, greater I guess streamlining of, and streamlining of it as well as clarity. I think clarity is so important when, when implementing these, these laws and, and regulations. And so I think that, yeah, anything that we can do to improve that process, you know, whether it's the database, the internal database that would, you know, assist with applicants in, in, in showing that they, they have this right to land restoration. I think that would be very helpful. The other thing I guess is time limits, maybe Attorney Phillips, if you can provide some input as to what do you see? Or what do you recommend as, as far as time limits in, in implementing this?
Though I think Senator, the, if you look at the, the generations that have passed, right, just starting from, from the top, let's say 75. Some people consider 10, 15 years a generation, let's say it's 20, so you, you've had a few generations already passed. But what has happened to our island is, is, is not just about numbers. I would say, who knows, right? But a large percentage of the beneficiaries have left the island. And, you know, you can blame them or they can look back and say, so that was supposed to be in operations since 75? The answer is yes, it was. So that was supposed to be working since 1995 again, yes it was. So that's supposed to be happening today, yes it was, but, but we didn't, right? Tough luck, standing in line. I would ask them because I think that it's one thing for someone to say, oh, I'm 18 and I'm getting married and can you hurry? Or, and it's another thing for a grandmother to say, you know, I was actually 20 when, when you guys started to talk about that and I've told my grandkids, don't even try. And, and when you look at those examples, because they're all true life examples, I think it, it gives guidelines that I would suggest are not very different from the Superior Court where they've got six months and you're allowed to provide exceptions when those exceptions come. But generally, I think someone in a, in a situation like this, you may not be familiar with this, but there came a time at land management, I don't know what it is today, when attorneys needed certificate of title for land in order to be used, for example, as security when our clients need an alternative to bail. And there was a time with land management, I don't know what it is today, where it would take over a year. And somebody in the legislature passed a law that gave them 24 hours and you know, I've never had a problem. I've never had a problem, land management's able to do it. Now, I don't ask them very often, but the times I do, they're able to comply with the law. And I'll tell you what the difference is, not the individuals, it's the law, the law says do it. The judges, I'm not gonna say they apologize, but they let us know, hey, those are the rules. And we said, Your Honor, you gotta be kidding. And I'm really saying like that, but, but you know what I mean, they look at us and say, those are the rules. And everybody just, you know, adapts to, to, to those rules. So I think at first the, the, it'd be, it'd be rough for the commission because it's like, hey, you know, you're kind of changing the, the rules in the middle of the game and now we have this. But on the other hand, short of GMH, that's gotta be the most critical area or one of the most critical areas that we, we just gotta get going. And, you know, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, I'm just saying that, that we haven't, right? We, we haven't since 1975, so we gotta do it now. And no more excuses, I mean, you know, the, I would add a one, one general provision, I think everybody really needs to understand, there was nothing wrong with the act. It's just that the Guam Legislature had to foresight to implement it as opposed to the Congress. If the Congress had done the same thing, there'd be nothing wrong with it. They have the authority to do it. So we're not doing anything that, or weren't doing anything that's immoral or racist or anything like that. We're, we're not and the record needs to be clear. So when people come in, nobody needs to be spooked, really. I mean, if, if, for example, your Senator Duñez tell me your go-to, I know your history, right? But in, in, in with all due respect to the commission members, they can sign up and say, hey, I'm not defunto Tony Blas, right? I, I wasn't hired for that. You can't expect a staffer at the commission to have this kind of interest or this kind of passion. They don't, you know, that's not what they were hired for. Now, in fairness, if we make that a requirement, then you can hold them to it. So I would suggest really, listening to some of the responses, I'm thinking, eh, that's just, you know, if you don't have that interest, you're not gonna get it because the rules say you need to, you need to know this. Develop a, a group that can answer that question for the commission so there's no excuse. And, you know, I, I may be joking a little bit, but I would suggest, you know, if you had someone like defunto Tony Blas on it, you have Joe Bora and others that really understand this, come to us and we'll tell you. I mean, when they come to me, the examples, I'm like, oh my God, you can't figure this one out? With the, with the caveat of, of, this is really as an example. I haven't found one person that I can't find a, a way for them to, to qualify if they're actually part of that group, I haven't. Before, we found a number of people that were improperly excluded. I haven't found one yet and of course, there's gonna be somebody. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that, this is a lot bigger than before, but at the same time, you're, you're including so many people that, and it was, it was designed really this way that if, if anybody was affected by it, and we all know, you know, the, the groups that were, they're gonna be included, they're gonna be included. But rather than asking the staff to become expert on, on this or become passionate about it, I suggest that that be somebody else. And, and with all due respect to our judges, I don't think a single one of them would have asked for the six month requirement, they wouldn't. But, but they comply with it, so, you know, that's the way it goes. And, you know, being the bad guy kind of is, is, is sometimes necessary. And don't take away the, the, the hard work that's being done. But at the end of the day, you know, I, I think anybody, any family waiting more than six months, for what? Something's wrong. And, and everybody should be able to tell them, you know, what, what is the problem? It can't be the pile. I remember when, when Pika took care of that pile, there was a huge pile. And I don't think she was doing anything else in life, she just dedicated her time to go through that pile. And that's the way it has to be. Is everybody doing that? I, I doubt it, probably not, but yeah, that, that has to be. I mean, I, I never suggested that to Pika, she just did it on her own. She just took a whole stack, dived in and, and straightened out everything. And I'm sure she had, you know, great support from, from the commission, but yeah, the, you know, you, you can't teach that, as you say. So if we assign some of those tasks to people that, that do have this knowledge and are passionate about it, that's fine, then it's kind of like specialization of labor. The commission members and the staff, they do what they do, you know, probably really good. But now we've got this extra part in here that is really gonna benefit everybody, but they're not expert in it. And so either one, make them experts in it, but that's, that's tough, right? Or two, just set a group of people where, where we can prove it. One guy that I know beats me and tops me is Joe Bora during his During his deposition, and I apologize, I don't have the deposition or the line, but for those that were there, we were competing with regard to the percentage and the dates. And as Joe Bora said, you guys know, didn't say it this way, but he essence said, do you know that at one point, the United States condemned the whole island and then gave it back? I didn't know that. I don't doubt Joe. I haven't looked it up. But if that's true, then that really eliminates a whole bunch of research. And I don't know that to be true. My numbers have always been in the high 60s, that percentage. And I know the areas, but I've never considered myself an expert. In fact, when dealing with the US attorneys, I told them, I'm a student. Everybody's supposed to know, this is just basic stuff. You get this off the internet, you get it from your family's. But yeah, I don't think our applicants should need to speak to their grandparents. A lot of them are not here. Yeah, it just scares them. You know, it's like, oh my God, I gotta go prove this. No, if you're from Suma, if you're Gozu, I mean, we know all of this. We should take pride in having this information. But I think for practicality purposes, we have a group that can answer that question, and then we have the commission do what they do best. Yeah, they're dealing with the land. We've got to tax them now with a huge political historic addition to their work. And I'm sure they're having trouble before, now we've added this. And I don't think anybody was screened when they were hired for the settlement agreement, right? It's not, it's not like attorneys and even senators were hired, so to speak, and a whole new problem comes, we're expected to become expert in that area. Not so with the government employees, they're hired for certain things in certain areas. That would be my suggestion. I think we have people on Guam. I would suggest Joe Bora chair that commission. I think it can happen fast. When my friends have told me, oh, I was sent to the John Bond files, I'm like, oh my God. It's like, that's not where you want to send the applicants, the John Bond files? Oh, God bless them. I mean, that's, and you know, they, I don't know what, the way they described it, they go into a room and it's like, no, we shouldn't do that to them. Yeah, you just call Joe, call me. And if I can't help, then I tell you, Joe Bora can help. Yeah, and I bet you, why, no, there's people that know more than me. I don't know if anybody knows more than Joe Bora, but there's people that know more than me. You put a group of people together and they can go through that like that and say, absolutely, absolutely. But it's easier probably to bring the one or two that you don't think qualify, and let's see. Because I haven't seen anyone, I haven't seen an example that works. I'm sure there is, but it's so small, so manier. With that in mind, things should be rolling, right? Things should be rolling. Every time something comes up, that one goes out. But things really, really need to be rolling. So since you asked, I'll say six months, Senator.
Great. Well, thank you for that response. It definitely, yeah, we definitely need to bring people into the room that can catalyze this. And I do, I do believe, yeah, with my interactions with the Director Borha, he is a wealth of knowledge and can really help this situation along. So yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for the response.
Of course, if I may, that, you know, when, every time you say six months, or I say six months, then it just means that the budget, the money, the resources that Chamorro Land Trust needs goes up. Because if you say, Mike, do we have 10 years? We can do it with this many people. But if you want stuff done in six months, then they need the priority in resources that really they've deserved since 1975, really. And so, you know, we're way behind, we need to catch up. So whatever they need, we should give them more, because they need to catch up. And I know it costs money. So it's always going to be a question of, well, if that's really a priority, are we willing to give them the resources? Because it's easy to say, do it, right? That won't work, because they can't, they can't do it. And they could never do six months. It's a great thing if they have the resources, but if they don't have the resources, they can't do it, and it would be, it'd be a mess to even impose that on them, because then we're setting them up for failure. It's not, it's not their fault. Yeah, so again, with that caveat that, you know, we've got to give them the resources. But boy, give them the resources and then hold them accountable, that is win-win. That's absolutely win-win. And it's generation, I think, of all of our people. Gosh, we've got places like Vallejo and San Diego that think they have more people from Guam than we have. And it's like, wow, that is sad. If we had those developments working, I really don't think they would find that need as easily. Of course, people would still leave, but it wouldn't be for lack of a place to stay. And that's what our people are entitled to, is that can't be an issue. Not a place to stay. You've got that. And so with that, I would respectfully suggest that the two come together and the legislature decide how much of a priority really is this? Because that's where the check needs to be made to the trust.
Thank you so much, Attorney Phillips. I really greatly appreciate your recommendations. I'm sure the Chair is taking note as well as the commission, so hopefully, we can have another roundtable regarding this.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate the time.
This was Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly, I join my other colleagues in congratulating all the parties that are here in this hearing this morning that contributed to essentially strengthening the foundation for the land trust. And I don't necessarily know that more of our people really understand what would have happened, you know, and the challenge to the legality of the land trust. And certainly, Attorney Phillips had outlined, had this been a congressional action, it would not have been an issue, as they've done in other areas, but certainly not in the case of Guam. So certainly to our attorneys that were involved in moving this process forward, I think it's a very good step forward. And I'm hopeful, I'm not going to belabor this, Madam Speaker, this morning, but I'm hopeful that as a result of it, that the land trust itself takes this opportunity in moving forward to continue not only to implement the leases, but of course, for me, it's always been an issue with regards to compliance, to make sure that the lands are being used as they're intended, because there are many, many, many individuals, I can't specifically now, we're not able to use the same words, saying the, you know, those of us that are descendants of the indigenous Chamoros, but for those potential applicants that fall into what the definition is that defines those that are eligible. But, you know, we ensure the land trust is being properly run and managed. And that has not been the history. The history of the land trust has been very controversial. And, you know, I am very critical, because I spent some time before, goodness, 10, 11 years ago, going through and working with the Chamorro Land Trust at their request when I was up at the University of Guam. And I just want to see the land trust properly implement its program, properly ensure and regulate that those that are recipients are also complying with the requirements of the land trust. Because there are many individuals in this community, and even those, you know, Attorney Phillips had mentioned, that don't live on Guam and are in California and other places in the world, that will never have the opportunity to ever have land trust property. They themselves may not have inherited land here, and we never have that chance. Their children or grandchildren may never have that chance, because of, obviously, there's limits to the amount of property that the land trust has in its inventory. And so, you know, I hate to be critical, but at the same time, I think this is a wonderful opportunity moving forward to ensure that that compliance and that there's not continued abuse and misuse of land trust property. And those that, you know, didn't properly fall in line, you know, running to the head of the line and taking land, essentially taking land that they should not have taken, because there are others that were in line before them that had applied, that should have been considered and been given that opportunity. And so I certainly look forward to seeing the land trust grow from this. And like I said, ultimately properly implement the programs as was intended, as was envisioned by those that moved this issue forward all those many years ago. And I think if we see that, I think that's the best thing we can pass on to our children and our grandchildren. So with that, thank you again to everyone who's been a part of this. And certainly good to see Pika. I know I've never really had a chance to talk to Pika, but her work during her tenure at the land trust, you know, it's noted. The amount of effort she herself personally invested in wanting to see compliance of the land trust certainly is remembered and certainly well appreciated. So thank you again, and thank you, Madam Speaker, and certainly, Happy New Year to everyone. I think we look forward to a better year this year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Nelson, our Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't have any questions at this time, but I just want to also acknowledge the amazing work that the Chamorro Land Trust Commission has done. Also, Pika and Joey for their hard work during this monumental case. I mean, this was very huge. And also, I remember going through it, it was a little bit scary, you know. We didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that the Chamorro Land Trust was recognized properly. We wanted to make sure that those that lost their lands during the occupation times, that, you know, the families and the beneficiaries received that land back. And so, you know, huge congratulations again. I mean, this is truly a memorial for our island and a testament to all of your hard work. And I know, Pika, you probably didn't sleep a lot, you know. I'm sure these things kept you up at night. But great work, and thank you to the commission for continuing to do the job that you do. I know it is not easy. I know you get a lot of calls, you know, asking, what part of the line am I in? Where's my number at? So thank you so much for your continued service to the people of Guam. And attorneys, thank you as well for working and making this a true victory for the people. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Nelson. And again, thank you to all the senators who spent time with us this morning, recognizing the importance of the progress that Chamorro Land Trust Commission must make, is making. And hopefully, we will demand that they make as well quicker. Sorry, but that, I agree, it has to happen. And we are all here for the same purpose, all of us are dedicated to that. All of you commissioners, thank you for your service. Director and staff, I know you've been working very hard under extreme circumstances. And I too, wishing you the best in this upcoming year and wishing for all of us huge progress for this commission. And again, to follow up, before we conclude, if we could get from the Attorney General's Office communication with the United States, your communication since the settlement agreement or since we passed the law, incorporating the terms of the settlement agreement. And if we could get from anyone, any additional testimony, especially on, yeah, the application of these rules or to existing leases, right? And if we should do that or not, for sure, we will apply these rules going forward to the new leases, right? And then any other issues that have been brought up, if you'd like to clarify. I, of course, want to thank again, I don't think I can thank enough those attorneys who worked in the case and, you know, the commissioners at the time who went through. And Senator Nelson was there with us, we even had a hearing on it, whether the Attorney General's Office was going to defend this lawsuit or not. That's how, you know, we got involved way back then, because we were worried they were not, they would not defend it. And they did, and they did an excellent job. And I want to thank Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, who committed to that, who hired, who agreed, you know, that, and for Attorney Phillips and for the commissioners who hired Attorney Phillips and assured that we would have a history of Guam in those settlement discussions. I think that was very crucial. And I don't think we can, we can spend all day here talking about the history of Guam and the land takings and the right and the need to, you know, restore justice as much as possible. And again, I want to commend the senators who preceded us, those beginning with Paul Bordaglio back in the 70s, who insisted that we were going to take care of our people, even when the United States was not going to take care of them, and we were going to bring justice where justice was not done. And we're still on this pursuit, all of us together. And I want to thank all of you who are here today for showing that commitment and putting in the hard work to do that. So if there's nothing further, we will continue to accept testimony. I'd like to close the testimony by January 18th, so that I can get this bill onto the session agenda, if possible, and get these rules in place so that we can fulfill our requirements under the settlement agreement. Please submit testimonies to my office at the Guam Legislature in this Guam Congress Building or through the email at senator@chamorro.com. This public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 10:01 a.m. Situs Massey, and Happy New Year. Take care.
Thank you. Happy New Year.